Here. Deb, maybe you could just run down the list and see who answers so we know who's here now, and then we'll do official attendance at 6:30.
Okay. Please answer here. Ms. Waterman Kulpah?
Here.
Ms. Alexander? Ms. Alexander? Mr. Rizone? Mr. Rizone? Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Lester? Mr. Lester?
Deb, I'm here. This is Amy. I was muted by the host and couldn't unmute at the time, but now I can. I don't know if that's Kevin also.
Yes, I just was unmuted. Thank you.
Good.
I unmuted Kevin, and I think, Amy, we were working against each other.
I'm good now. Thanks, Keaton.
Okay, good.
Mr. Rizone? Is he unmuted?
I don't see him in here, honestly.
I heard him speaking before.
Is he under Linda? I forget what name he was.
That's probably Wally. Is Wally under Linda?
I unmuted Wally. Wally should be all set.
Is it a Linda Rizone?
Yes. That's Dan, darn it.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, we can.
Okay, should I unmute or not? Or should I mute?
You can stay on.
Okay, thank you, Keaton. I won't hold you off. Thank you.
Yeah, as long as it's just you and the board that are unmuted.
Whatever you say.
Continuing, Mr. Pacer. Mr. Pacer? Ms. Grenhour? I believe she said she was not going to be in attendance tonight.
Right.
Mr. Greco? Mr. Greco?
I think I just got unmuted. Now, Wally Pacer.
Okay.
I'm here.
Mr. Greco?
I'm here.
Mr. Master?
Here.
And trustee Piazza?
I do not see him.
Thank you.
Okay. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look at the secret documents that Chip emailed around today. And does anyone have any comments on those documents? On that document?
Wally, I mean, Wes, can you hear me, Chuck Rizoni?
I can hear you.
Wes, can we just have a kind of a clarification? Who takes precedent in historic building? The national or the local? If it's not a national, I mean, do they both hold the same amount of sway or not? Can someone answer that question? That's something I can't understand. Local landmark versus national landmark status. Does one have more power than the other? That's my question.
Thank you. I'm unmuted. As far as I understand it, Chuck, the precedent that takes place during a secret review has to do with the eligibility of a landmark as a state or national listed property. This property, two doors down, which some have argued is substantially contiguous to this property, has been deemed eligible by the State Historic Preservation Office. They have since updated their website, the Cultural Resource Information System. And the shippo agent reviewing it, there was a peer review done, so multiple shippo agents reviewed the material that was submitted by the homeowner. But it was, the decision was emailed to me today, which I immediately then turned around and emailed to Deb Habe's, Wes Stone, and Chip Greco, and Izzy Giacca, and asked Deb to forward on to you, which she then did, and so it should be in your email, the letter from the state. I am confused as to Chip's response. As far as it needed to meet a 25% threshold I've been trying to find, so if somebody could cite that for me, as far as substantially contiguous needing to be 25%, I'm messing up the property boundary of the site. So if somebody could cite that for me, and maybe we can move from there. And just so you know, I did forward, Historic Preservation Commission did recommend to go to move to public hearing to nominate 75 Evans as a local landmark. So we'll be in the public hearing phase for the Historic Preservation Commission, which then the commission looks at the results of the information collected during the public hearing, and then we would either decide to move forward with the nomination to the Board or rescind the nomination. I'm expecting, you know, this property to sail right through to the Village Board as shippo concurred with me this afternoon, as this is obviously a local landmark, and hopefully then we'll see an approval by the Village Board as well.
Thank you.
In response to Kate's question, it's 6 NYCRR 617.49, which says that any unlisted action that exceeds 25% of any threshold established in this section occurring wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any historic building, structure, facility, site, or district, or prehistoric site that is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, or that is listed on the State Register of Historic Places, or that has been determined by the Commissioner of Shippo or of state parks, to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places. So that's where the 25% threshold comes.
Okay.
And the way the 25% threshold works here, it's 25% of another type 1 threshold, which the type 1 threshold that has been asserted to have been exceeded here is the number of units that are proposed here, which is the threshold under 617.4B5 is in a city, town, or village having a population of 150,000 persons or less, 200 units if it's connected to public water, which this would be. So 25% of 200 is 50. However, as I indicated in my email, there's only an increase, a net increase here of 38 units, because there's 57 units on the property right now. So assuming that's correct, whether it's substantially contiguous or not doesn't matter.
But it's not contiguous, correct? I mean, it doesn't share a property line with local.
So substantially contiguous is not defined in the regulations. There was a proposal to define it. And, but when they redid the regs last year, they ended up not doing that. Case law is kind of all over the map. The definition of contiguous generally does mean abutting. The question is what the word substantially means in that context. And there's certainly, I mean, there is case law that has interpreted that to mean apply to properties that are not literally abutting, but as I said, unless the new residential units here are more than 50, then it doesn't matter. For purposes, I shouldn't say it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter for purposes of classification of this action or reclassification of the action from an unlisted to a type 1.
Any other questions about that, about the historic preservation?
Well, the only other thing that I, presumably people saw, that shippo also responded to the applicants, that because the property was not adjacent, that they did not feel that the project was going to negatively impact 75 Evans.
I didn't see that. I saw the original letter from last year. I didn't see anything updated.
It was, it was an email. She responded.
It was today.
It was today, about 12:14 today.
Right.
I did look at that, and I thought it had an old date. That's why I'm questioning it.
So Kate, it's not an attachment. It's actually just an email. You got to scroll down to see her response to the applicant's attorney.
It was directed back to Sean.
So what time am I looking for? I've got a plenty of emails.
It's today's date, 12:14 PM. And it's from Jennifer, back to Sean.
I'm not seeing it. Sorry. I'm not seeing it.
You're all set with that response?
The response in their letter.
So is this response sufficient, that it's not? Being that it's not immediately adjacent, there's no new comments on it?
I'm just looking for, I know I saw it earlier, the original response from last year.
From July 3rd last year?
Something, shippo's original response that was attached to something today.
So yeah. So when the applicant's attorney forwarded shippo's response, it also attached shippo's July 2019 response, which is essentially what she was saying, that they were going to revisit based on the eligibility determinate. So that was attached to the email that I forwarded.
Would you like the July 2019 correspondence on the screen? Or anything on the screen?
I have it, but you should probably screen if you have it. My only other question was from the letter that was forwarded to us from Judy today, from a gentleman, and he was talking about something that was beyond my head with archaeology as far as, let me just find this part of it. The escarpment issues. The proposed density would destroy the outcropping of the escarpment. Those outcroppings are apparent and visible on the current property. These are archaeological considerations to disrupting and destroying the outcroppings of these natural features. I don't know anything about outcropping, so I'll let someone else that knows better than I speak to that.
I don't.
Has the building department engineer looked at that? I don't know anything about it.
I haven't had them, I haven't, I just looked at that letter today. He hasn't looked at anything regarding that, per se, because it never came up before.
So what is an outcropping?
I assume they were talking about areas where the rock protrudes through the grass lawn area. That's missed my assumption, though. I am not totally 100% sure.
So I assume when they do site work, they would have to dig below the outcropping and then possibly take the outcropping out?
I, when I was on site, I didn't notice any. Again, I didn't walk in the back portion of the yard, but because they're going to be building up front anyways, I don't know of any areas where they would conflict with those areas. But again, I'd have to do another site visit to be absolutely sure. But if anything, I would assume they're more towards the back. But again, we need to verify that if we think it's an issue. In my mind, that's a construction issue more than, I don't know.
Well, if it's an environmental issue.
Yeah, if they had to blast, I guess, but, you know, in that area.
If it was going over, how does outcropping affect the drain? I don't have any knowledge.
Yeah. It's hard to say.
Any other questions on the secret document? Anyone not agree with it?
I'd like to know about this escarpment issue personally, but.
Wes, it's Kevin.
It keeps coming to us.
It appears that there's been a couple of things talked about this short time that we don't have answers for, and that's my concern.
Which is what?
I believe the escarpment is the only one. What else is there?
Are we settled with the historic preservation issue? And we received, we see, received some information, and Kate had questioned it, and I don't know if her questions were answered. She was still looking something up, I believe.
Okay, I guess that'd be up to Kate.
I was told that nothing mattered because they don't have, I think it's 15 new units. So they're type 1, type 1, the issue doesn't exist. So apparently, historic preservation plays no part in this, is what my understanding is.
No, that's certainly not what I said. I said that from a procedural classification standpoint, the issue of whether this is a type 1 versus a type, is an unlisted action, which was, it was originally classified as, only triggered if there are more than 50 new units. That doesn't mean that historic preservation concerns are not relevant, and they're addressed in the draft that was circulated. So again, it's up to the board to decide what they, whether they think that the project's going to have a adverse effect on historic resources. All I was saying is it's, I do not believe it needs to be reclassified as a type 1, which wouldn't dictate any result anyway. Substantively, the issue is whether or not you believe collectively that there's a significant adverse, potentially significant adverse, impact on historic resources.
I would yield to Kate and Wes on that topic.
I don't think there is anything significant with historic. I mean, we're part of history, too. We're building it right now, and we have to remember that. And we are, you know, we are going to do our best to, we're doing a good job in this village of maintaining what we have, and we're upping that. So I don't know how this project is getting in the way of that.
Well, I think there was a huge, huge mess, and I'm not sure about the timing, but I'm pretty sure the seeker clause about his state and national register eligible properties, the timing of that went in for seeker. But we've got several local landmarks that are very eligible for the state and national register in the Williamsville Train Depot and the section house, and it was a huge mess on the tally. So I just want to be very, very careful of how we're proceeding with this, because not only is 75 Evans a historic resource, but yes, documentation still would need to be done to submit for eligibility because they've been determined undetermined in the system. But if you look at the recon survey, 1997 recogisance survey prepared by Barrow and Associates for the village, they list properties all around this site. And when I spoke to other shippo agents other than Jennifer Wolkowski, when I talked to James Manelli, who had a conversation with Kathy How, who actually wrote this document, and Kathy now works for shippo as a shippo agent, you know, the board directed Kathy and her team at the time to only focus on locally landmarking properties, but she presented to the board, according to James, through Kathy, that they thought this area was eligible for a historic district. So I want to be very careful about, you know, saying, well, there's only one property, and is it substantially contiguous? Well, the property owner owns the property next door that is immediately adjacent, is next door to this property. So is it seen as one site? That's for the attorneys to decide. So I want to be very careful, because I think, I think we did a disservice because of my ignorance and the board's ignorance about historic properties and seeker rules when it came to the Natale development. So I want to be very, very careful here about how development does affect historic properties. And yes, architecture is seen as a moving, growing thing. I 100% agree with that. But I also think that if, without preservation, you lose a sense of your place, you lose a sense of yourself as a community. So let's be, let's be very careful about how we affect the historic properties in the village. And we're talking probably, probably the oldest house in the village, and it's surrounded by the other stock in the village, that is the oldest that we have in the village. So I'm not talking about how this project looks, how it works actually as a site plan. We need to look at this project as, does it affect the environment? And historic properties are deemed to be part of this discussion.
So it's still not clear to me, Kate, what the, what would, what would be the worst-case scenario? What would be the worst effect that could happen?
As far as properties?
As far as this project went forward, and is it that your fear is that it would affect, is it 75 Evans? And the other properties that are potentially eligible around this area, that they wouldn't get put on the historic register, or part of that historic fabric is going to be destroyed by building on this site? I'm not clear on what the concern is.
I don't, I don't think it affects the eligibility of sites to any type of state or national register, or a local register for that matter, or local landmarking list for that matter. I think that there's a reason that historic properties are part of the seeker discussion, because they do influence, because part of seeker is about aesthetics, right? That's one of, one of the concerns in the seeker review is aesthetics and community and that interwoven fabric, as you said. So I think that's the concern, and that's where, you know, historic preservation comes to mind.
Okay. All right.
Well, it's 6:30 here. Why don't we open the public meeting?
Let me just note one thing, Wes, just real quick, again, for whatever, not suggesting this is definitive or not, but just.
Okay.
So everyone's clear that shippo is, you know, I just was taking a look on this escarpment issue. As a, you know, I'm not exactly sure what, you know, if this is deemed an archaeological issue or whatever, but the shippo letter back in July also stated that as far as they were concerned, the project would not impact any archaeological and/or historic places. So whether that's, the escarpment issue falls into that or not, I don't know.
Well, we went through this last time, how did the shippo send field agents to review the site?
Okay, but we can only go on the information we have, right? It's our job to use what we have in our arsenal to make the decision, not to speculate.
Well, if we don't know, we need to get the ready.
We've been told to, that the concerns of the public that we should be looking at are the ones based on facts. So are there any facts that came across in a letter that we received today? So, I mean, I don't want to discount it because it came in today. So is there something relevant here that we need to concern ourselves with today?
Well, I, as an individual, if we're signing off on this, I want to make sure that what we do and what we vote on is correct and accurate, not what we think or what somebody says that we don't know. I think we need to know with this project if there's historic issues and if there's environmental issues with the escarpment. Right now, it seems like people are guessing.
Well, let's get back to, why don't we open the meeting? To start out, welcome to the Village of Williamsville Planning Board meeting from Monday, May 18th, 2020, which is now 6:30. Deb, if you could please take attendance, please?
Ms. Waterman Kulpah?
Here.
Ms. Alexander?
Here.
Mr. Rizone?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Pacer? Ms. Greco, Greco, or Grenhour? Is absent. Mr. Greco? Village Attorney Greco?
Sorry, that was me.
Mr. Master, Building Inspector?
Here.
And trustee Piazza? Thank you.
Deb, I'm here, too.
You forgot Ron.
Mr. Trigilio, apologies.
Now, we have minutes from our May 4th meeting. Did anyone have a chance to review those? And anyone care to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 4th meeting.
Is there a second on the motion?
I have a second. It's Amy.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Abstain.
Okay, so everyone was in favor except I think that was Kate abstained?
Yes, it was me that abstained.
Okay. And first on the agenda, under Old Business is logged twenty nineteen dash PB dash six A and six B. It's a secret determination for Bloker Home, one thirty-five Evans Street. Again, I, so what are we going to do with this? Or historic preservation or historic issues next to this property? Is there, are we going to revise the seeker or what do you want to do?
Well, two revised it and I agree with the revisions he made, which is, you know, he put in where we currently stand and the information that we currently have.
Well, I think the operative word there is the information that we currently have. Is that correct information? That's my question.
That's a letter from the state. An email from the state.
Can you put that email back up on the screen, on the screen again? I looked at it earlier.
Is this the one you, you wanted, Wally?
No, I think he's looking for the email.
I think it's the email after that.
Oh, the email.
The email from shipo.
I don't know that I have that. Do you have that, Tim or Chip?
I actually don't have it either.
I emailed it to you, Keaton.
Oh, you did, okay. I got it now, okay. Sorry about that. This one here?
No, that was the July meeting. There's an email that dated today.
I actually didn't, I didn't get that email either, Chip. This is Tim.
I attached, all right, well. I can, I can share it if you give it to me or I can, I mean, it's.
I can go back into my email.
I mean, I can, I can read it as well if you want. It's not very long.
Chip, why don't, why don't, if you could go ahead and read it while they're looking for it?
Yeah.
Sure. So Jennifer Wolkowski sent an email to Sean Hopkins, twelve fourteen PM today, saying, hi, Sean, thank you for contacting New York State Historic Preservation Office. As you know, our office reviewed the proposed Bloker Homes construction project back in twenty nineteen, at which time we signed off on the project with the comments that you attached, which was the letter you just showed. Key, we are not issuing new comments on this project as the house in question is not immediately adjacent to the proposed development area. We received a national register application from the property owner based on the information submitted to determine that the house is eligible for the state and national registers. If you have any further questions, please let me know.
Thanks, Chip.
Sure.
I recall without seeing it.
Got it. Here we go. Thank you, Sean.
It's Kevin speaking. I was referring to the, the memo dated today from Jennifer, where it says seventy-five Evans embodies a distinctive characteristics of a type or period or method of construction represents the work of a master or possesses higher artistic values or represents a significance and distinguishable entry whose components may lack individual distinction. What does that tell me?
It tells you that it's eligible for the state register and the national register of historic places. Doesn't tell you whether or not this project is going to significantly adversely or positively affect this project. It doesn't say, it's not taking a position on that. When she's saying in her email as a follow-up, that was notwithstanding its eligibility, shipo was not changing its earlier position expressed in July of twenty nineteen, that the project as proposed wasn't going to negatively infect, impact that historic resource.
All right, thank you.
That's shipo's opinion.
Thank you.
So we're basically, this, sorry, this is Amy. So we're basically still in the same position we were two weeks ago, which is we recognize that there are at, at least one, if not more, right? Historic homes in that area. However, shipo says that, you know, this is not an impact on them. And we determined two weeks ago, right? During the short assessment, that there would be no too small impact in this area. That doesn't seem to have changed.
Yeah, I, I would say.
Majority ruled last time. That's not how, that was not a complete consensus on the board. So let's just be clear about that.
Yeah, and, and also to be clear, there, there are clearly significant developments, including the fact that this property is determined to be eligible. And the property has been, the process of nominating it as a local landmark has, has begun. That's why I added all of that discussion of that to the draft seeker determination that I circulated. Again, I don't, frankly, I don't think anybody here, including the applicant probably, and I think we'll hear from the applicant when they present on the revised plan, is going to suggest that that property is not historic. I, I agree with Kate. I was at the HPC meeting. I think obviously it's up to the village board ultimately to decide what it's going to do. But this is probably as close to a slam dunk as exists in the village for a local landmark designation. But that's not, that, that doesn't in and of itself determine that a project located, proposed near that property will necessarily negatively affect that property. Shipo reaffirmed its position that it won't. That's shipo's opinion. It's not binding on you, but it's certainly relevant. So that's the information that I added here. And that's where we are. I, you know, I don't know that there's any more information that is going to be forthcoming on that. I suppose it's always possible to do more. But as I, again, we have a obligation to thoroughly analyze environmental impacts. But we also have, this board also has an obligation to, you know, process and make determinations in a prompt manner. That's what the regulations also require and to be ruled by the, the rule of reason. So again, it's if, if the board believes there's more that, that it needs for this, then we need to know what information that is and we need to have a plan for trying to obtain that information. If the board or a majority of the board feels it has all the information or sufficient information it needs to make a determination as to the potential impacts on, on historic properties, then the, the, the board can move forward. Although we also have two other outstanding issues from the last meeting, which is, is the conflict with the zoning code, which based on our last discussion revolved around the issue of gradual transition. And from lower density to higher density. And the increase in the intensity of use of land. So that's, those are essentially the the, the three issues that are, I guess, outstanding. And the question is whether now you feel you have the information you need to make that determination or not. But if not, we need to know what, what you think you're missing and how you, how the board believes it should proceed. But as I said, we do need to move this process along. We just can't keep kicking the can down the road.
So how does the revised drawing sketches that we received in our email affect this seeker process then? So those two outstanding items that you just spoke about were addressed in email from the code enforcement officer with a new set of, with a new proposal that hasn't been presented yet. So, so what are we facing this seeker review on, Chip?
So that, that's why the applicant proposes to present on these changes. And then, you know, I simply circulated a draft so that one, you know. So what I envision happening here, what I recommend how you proceed is here the applicant present on the what they're proposing at this point. And then you, you know, decide whether or not you've, you're, you're ready to move forward or not with making a secret determination.
Okay, so Chip, having said that, I think it would be time for Sean to make a presentation.
If the board's willing to entertain that, certainly.
Is that okay with the board?
It's okay with me.
I'd like to hear from Sean. I think the new site plan, right? And the change, changes that were sent to us are in direct correlation to those two parts of seeker that we're trying to address that gradual change. Make adjustments to fit what our concerns are.
I guess Sean, if you're there, would you?
I'm here, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Kate, you want to pull up the presentation?
Keaton, you got it or do I need to do it?
No, can you do it?
Yes. One second.
I'm just going to let you keep control.
I got it. Sure.
Kate, I'm just going to let you, yeah, I'm just going to let you keep control of the screen. You can just turn the slides, okay? I just think it's easier. So if you want to go to the next slide. So I just want to make sure for everyone who's listening, I know the planning board members know, but Sean Hopkins from the Law Room of Hopkins, Sergeant McCarthy, and I'm the counsel representing the project sponsor with respect to the project. I think everyone knows that this has a long history. Do you want to remind everyone you did hold a public hearing at your discretion on December second? We previously have held meetings on August fifth, October seventh, November fourth, December second, January sixth, February third, March second, and of course, most recently, May fourth. The site itself, as everyone knows, is about five point two, six acres in size. It is properly zoned neighborhood mixed-use district. Multi-family dwellings are in expressly permitted use. We are previously proposing ninety-seven mixed-income units. We've now lowered that to ninety-five units. And I'll talk about that a little bit, why we made that particular change. I want to make sure everyone also recalls that mixed-income residential units mean residents or tenants with a median income between fifty and ninety percent of the median income in the Buffalo Niagara MSA. So this is for people that have jobs. They may not be as affluent as others in the village. But generally speaking, you know, they're working hard. They deserve nice housing. And we really think this is an appropriate location for that type of housing. If you want to go to the next slide, Keaton? So what's there today? We all know, of course, it's a bloker home. It is important in the context of seeker to keep in mind, this is not a vacant site. Obviously, there is development. The current number of residential units there is fifty-seven private rooms and suites. And of course, in an assisted living and enhanced living residence. That'll come into play a little bit later. Kate, if you want to go to the next slide? So obviously, the site has some topography, unlike many sites in Amberston, Williamsville. And I just marked, I think everyone knows where that existing ground sign is out along Evans. You can see they're pointed with the arrow. The elevation at that point is six hundred sixty-one feet. As you head north, on the very northwest corner of the site, we drop all the way down to six hundred forty-seven feet. And you can see the contours there. Um, I was listening to the discussion during your pre-meeting. I do want to acknowledge that, yes, there are some bedrock outcroppings on the site. They're generally behind the existing building on the southeast portion of the site. Shipo did specifically look at archaeology. That's not per se a protected resource. But I want to note the bedrock outcroppings will not be disturbed. We're not going to just, we're not going to disturb them at all. And secondly, and this is perhaps more important, no blasting will occur in connection with this project. Want to go to the next slide, Keaton? So the original layout, going all the way back to August of last year, what we originally presented was a simply an addition to the existing building. The existing building has a footprint of about twenty-five thousand square feet, fifty thousand square feet in total. What we were proposing at that time was a three-story addition. It was going to occupy a substantial portion of the Evans Street frontage. The overall addition would have had approximately sixty-five thousand square feet. At that time, we were showing eighty-seven mixed-income apartments with a hundred thirty-one parking spaces. There were several problems that were identified by the planning board as well as nearby residents with that layout. And I highlighted that parking that we had behind the site. So while the code would of course encourage and allow that, we basically were taking up the entire village point frontage with parking. It did require several variances, Keaton, if you can go to the next slide. And those variances that were required for the original project were two setback variances. We needed a setback variance along the south side. Forty-foot maximum allowed, two hundred twenty-three feet proposed. Along the north side, and I have these both highlighted in purple, forty feet also allowed and a hundred one feet proposed. And then perhaps most importantly, we're asking for a substantial variance for an increase in the size of the footprint, going from a twenty-five thousand square foot building to a building that was just shy of fifty thousand square feet. So that got shelved based on comments we received. If you want to go to the next slide, Keaton? So now, what I want to talk about, I want to take one step backward because there's been a lot of discussion about this. And I think to some degree, a certain degree of confusion pertaining to the interplay and relationship between the adopted Williamsville Community Plan and then the NMU design standards. So going back in history, the community plan itself, the discussion of that began more than thirteen years ago, about thirteen years ago. It started with the formation of a community plan committee. They held a hearing way back on December fourth of two thousand and seven. Ultimately, adopted the resolution recommending the village board approve the community plan. The village board sent it back on September twenty-second of two thousand and nine, nearly two years later. The draft community plan was sent back to the village board. The village board held public hearings on June twenty-third of two thousand and eight, as well as October twenty-sixth of two thousand and nine. Then ultimately, on April twelfth of two thousand and ten, adopted the community plan, which was subsequently amended on May twenty-sixth of two thousand and fifteen. The community plan is basically the equivalent of the village's official comprehensive plan. So really, it's a planning document supposed to guide the land use decisions. But it was the first step, the second step was the actual adoption of a new zoning map and a new zoning code. Want to go to the next slide, Keaton? So I, I pulled out a couple of pages from the adopted community plan or comprehensive plan. There's two pages that are really relevant in the context of the NMU district. They're pages twenty-five and twenty-six. I thought this language dealing with the character, and again, keep in mind, this is the village board's document, was relevant. And I have the two bullet points there. And basically, the first one is referencing key characteristics of this area, including multi-story buildings, a consistent building edge, a mix of uses and architectural styles. Another key characteristic is the area's close proximity to established residential neighborhoods. And then the. And then the final sentence, and I think this is very important. "The NMU area of the village contains a mix of spaces and uses meant to evolve over time at their own pace, building by building, in response to changing lifestyles and needs." That term "meant to evolve over time" becomes relevant because if you actually look at the design objectives for the NMU District, we have that language of gradual transition. If you look back at these original documents, the certainly language suggesting gradual transition doesn't necessarily or isn't limited to density or changes in character. It's a temporal aspect that basically the village will continue to evolve over time, which does make some sense. And then the second bullet point from that discussion of character, areas of the village classified as NMU consist of both existing higher-density residential areas and areas that have been identified as appropriate for residential development in the future. Want to go to the next slide, Keaton? So simultaneously, with the adoption of the community plan on page 26, you see the design principles that the village board thought were appropriate for the NMU Zoning District. Not going to talk about these here, but you'll notice they mirror what's in the actual zoning code as well. So those are the same 11 design principles, which the board has spent a lot of time discussing previously. Go to the next slide, Keaton? So once that process was done, finalized with the adoption of the community plan, the next step was the Board of Trustees adopting the Neighborhood Mixed Use District Design Standards, of course, which are contained in section 11217 of the code. That occurred on May 26th of 2015, and then amendments were approved by the Board of Trustees on October 26th of 2015. Go to the next slide, Keaton? And then as part of that process, of course, the Board of Trustees established and adopted a new zoning map. And you can see it on the right-hand side of the screen here. Basically, the board thought there were two areas in the village that were appropriate for the NMU Zoning District. The first area is down in the southwest corner of the town, associated with South Long, which everyone knows well. And then, of course, the larger area was in that northeast jut out of the village and extends all the way from the bloker home site up to the north to Georgetown Apartments. So you have within that area, of course, Georgetown Apartments, Drexel Hill Apartments, the townhome projects, one intervening single-family home, and then the site, which of course, as I said, already existed and consisted of 57 units. Next, Keaton? So within section 11217A of the NMU Design Standards, we have some language that talks about what is the purpose of the Neighborhood Mixed Use District? And it's very similar to what I already referenced in terms of the adopted Community Plan. Key characteristics are multi-story buildings, consistent building edge, mix of uses and architectural styles, close proximity to established residential neighborhoods. And again, that thought of there being a gradual evolving in that district on a building by building basis. So clearly, the Board of Trustees during both these steps, the adoption of the Community Plan and then the adoption of the zoning code, recognized that NMU districts are in close proximity to residential neighborhoods. That makes sense. We're in a village setting and that would almost always be the case. Go to the next slide. And then section 11217A2 is where the Board of Trustees actually created and established the NMU Zoning District. And there is some language right in this brief paragraph that is relevant, so I'm going to read it real quick. "The regulations described herein establish the desired development pattern, form, massing, density, site layout, and architectural detailing for the NMU District. Given the varied context of surrounding neighborhoods, there is a need for clear standards that meet the goals and objectives of the community while allowing for flexibility and creativity. These regulations provide the necessary framework for high-quality development and flexible design alternatives." I think if you look at our project, look at how it's evolved over time, all the way to last week, we clearly hit those criteria that the Board of Trustees was referencing when they actually created that district, approximately five years ago. It is important to note that you see that sentence that says "there is a clear, there is a need for clear standards that meet the goals and objectives of the community." We'll talk about in a second. We've designed that, this project to really be consistent with those goals and objectives. Go to the next slide, Keaton? And then we have that, those 11 design objectives that we've talked about again and again. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these. I think everyone knows them well. Uh, I'm not going to read them one by one. A couple of them don't apply. A, which pertains to cul-de-sacs. There's also one on the next page, but if we meet, if you look at these, there's only really one that I think there's been a lot of discussion on whether we're compliant with, and it's E, which says "transitions from existing lower-density housing to higher-density housing should be gradual." So I have two points there. The first one is again, I think an argu- argument can be made if you look back at the actual planning documents, that's meant to be over time rather than a change in density or a change in character. And then second of all, it's clear that the Board of Trustees, based on that language I cited, clearly recognized that in the close context of the NMU District, there are existing residential neighborhoods. That doesn't mean that that fact should be ignored, but they clearly understood that at the time the NMU Design Standards were established. Want to go to the next slide, Keaton? And then you have the rest of the standards. Um, basically, the only other one that really doesn't apply is H, new streets. Obviously, we have no street, new streets with respect to this. But the last bullet point is the one I want to emphasize. It's important to mention that these items, A through K, the 11 standards, are design objectives and not objective standards. So the NMU Zoning District has very clear and somewhat, in certain instances, inflexible objective standards. We've designed this project to meet those. We also think that we meet the overall design objectives. So while there could be discussion about that one particular criteria of the 11, the gradual transition, it's important to note that if you take a look at any project that has any scope or any size, I think it would almost be impossible for there to be a project that comes in front of this board where you say 100% word for word, you are meeting each and every aspect of the design objectives. I think there's debate about one, two don't apply, and then I think it's quite clear that we've met the rest. So the next slide, Keaton? Next slide? Okay, so what do we mean? How are we complying with the actual objective standards? Keep in mind, I'm not talking about the planning objectives. I'm talking about the concrete-specific objective standards. And there's a lot of them set forth in the NMU Design Guidelines. We're satisfying building orientation and setbacks. That's section 117, or 11217B2. It is important to note that we have increased the front yard setback of the north building to 25 feet. We'll talk about that later. Ultimately, if the board would rather us leave it at 20 feet, we'd be fine with that. We're complying with the standards for lots with multiple buildings, building entry, sidewalks, driveways and access, loading service and maintenance and refuse facilities, stormwater and green infrastructure facilities. Keep it in mind that all of our fully engineered plans have been reviewed and deemed appropriate by the village's consulting engineering firm, William Shutton Associates. We're meeting utilities. If you go to the next slide, Keaton? We're complying with parking standards as far as them being in the rear. We are seeking an area variance for less parking than is required. But it's important to note, we could easily provide that additional parking on-site. We have a parking study that was done by SARP Associates and verified by the traffic engineer hired by the village at our cost, that we clearly have enough parking on our site. While we're asking for that variance, we think it's a win-win for everyone. Ultimately, if we're not successful, we would simply have to add that parking. We're meeting the landscaping requirements in terms of the amount of landscaping, which is very substantial. The landscaping locations, the foundation landscaping treatments, the buffers and the screens. Go to the next slide, Keaton? So here's the actual landscape plan, and we probably would update it to add some additional landscaping where we've removed some parking along the south, which we'll talk about in a second. But it really does show you how much landscaping we're proposing, and this is required by the code. 46 trees, 293 shrubs, 312 perennials, and believe it or not, 2,642 ground cover. So there's going to be a lot of green on this site, both in terms of the acreage of green space and perhaps more importantly, the amount of landscaping. You also recall, there's been a lot of discussion about the public realm. We've incorporated your input. We have sidewalks, seating areas to really try and bring a pedestrian feel to the relevant segment of the streetscape of Evans. So we think we've complied with those standards. But I want to emphasize why I went through that. If you look at the objective standards in the NMU District, and they're broken down category by category, we've designed this project to comply with those standards. And I think that's a very important point. Because those standards were established with a great deal of thought by the Board of Trustees after holding hearings, receiving recommendations, going through SEER, et cetera, et cetera. Keith, if you want to go to the next slide? So, and yeah, we also are meeting in terms of architectural consistency, architectural details, and then finally, lighting. It is important to note, we're not asking for architectural approval this evening. If you proceed with issuance of a negative declaration, we'll have to come back at you, back in front of you at a future meeting. But we have incorporated the input received over the course of many months in terms of the architecture of the buildings. Go to the next slide, Keaton? So one of the key inquiries the board has spent a lot of time on is really, what's the community character here? And I think everyone can agree, and not surprisingly, given the location, that we're also in a village, is that it's varied. There's a wide assortment of uses in the immediate vicinity. We have traditional homes located to the west, to the south, and southeast. Much larger homes located on the parcel directly to the north, and those parcels to the east, also on Village Point Lane. To the north, we have that attached townhome project on SJ, and then extending further north, we have a couple of large multifamily projects, Drexel Hill and Georgetown. And then it's also important to note that we really have a very large office park with big footprint buildings with numerous stories directly to the northeast. And believe it or not, that's 350,000 square feet of office space. It's important to note that if you look at the aerial, in certain instances, that office space itself is located directly adjacent to upscale homes. So the point is, just because you have a change in intensity, doesn't mean that that use cannot, is automatically incompatible with the nearby uses. And again, it's a varied area. There's a mixture of uses, a mixture of zoning classifications. That's basically the setting of the village. And we can look elsewhere in many instances in the village and find precisely that type of scenario. Want to go to the next slide, Keaton? So based on the input that we received during that meeting on May 4th, we've made several changes. And this is really what, where I want to emphasize the presentation. I also welcome input from the board as we go over this. First and foremost, we reduced the number of units from 97 to 95. Second of all, we've increased the southern side yard setback. So for the south building, which is on the right-hand side, we've increased that from 40 feet, which was previously proposed, to 50 feet. We've also simultaneously increased the driveway setback from 10 feet as originally proposed to 20 feet. Again, trying to deal with that language suggesting the need for gradual transition. Want to go to the next slide, Keaton? The nine parking spaces that were previously located along with southern boundary, you can see them there. We've added a couple of trees and some landscaping. We've moved those behind the bloker home building. That way, we're able to provide a continuous green space buffer along the southern edge of the site. That also allowed us to take that six-foot privacy fence that we've discussed previously, move it away from the property line, thereby giving the adjacent property at 81 Evans the feeling of 10 additional green space, 10 feet of additional green space added to their lot. Go to the next slide, Keaton? And then finally, as a result of these changes, we've done a couple of other things. The front yard setback of the south building has been increased to 20 feet, which is allowed by codes. We pushed it back a little bit. The front yard setback of the north building, which of course is on the left-hand side of the screen, has been increased from 20 feet to 25 feet. Uh, we've also added the front, the front yard setback of each of the three buildings. And we've measured those not only from the property line, but perhaps more importantly, from the feeling of community character from the edge of pavement. So for the north building, we're anywhere from 44 to 48 feet. From the middle building, we're anywhere to 29 to 33.25 feet. And then the south building, which is on the right, anywhere from 33.5 to 33.42 feet. And you can see we've added a label of the predominant setback of the homes on the east or west side of Evans. And you can see that predominant setback is 29 feet from the right-of-way and approximately 48 feet from the curb. So those changes, while they may seem relative, relatively minor, they're really all being made in an effort to try and match the consistency of where the homes sit on the west side of Evans Street in that relevant segment. Want to go to the next slide, Keaton? Think I got all that. Yep, next slide? So along with those changes that I just discussed to the site plan, we've also made some changes to the elevations. The, the primary goal of this is to try and reduce the scale of the north building. And you can see on these plans, we've shown what the grade is. Of course, I already mentioned the fact that as you head to the north along Evans Street frontage, there really is a considerable drop in the grade heading to the north. So the top plan or the bottom plan, the top plan is meant to be what we're now proposing. That is the updated elevation. So we've taken what was previously entirely a three-story building, and three stories is expressly permitted in the NMU District. And we've taken it so that both the southern portion, which is of course to the right, and then the northern portion, which is the left, will now be only two stories. That results in some pretty substantial changes. So now the height of the northernmost portion of the building has been lowered to 26 feet from 36 feet. The height of the southern portion of the building has been lowered from 36 feet to 28.66 feet. The middle section, which is approximately 33% of the facade, will remain at three stories. And that's because of the difference in the topography. So we've made that change. We basically made this building, so on the end, which compromised 33% of the facade each, we're down to literally between 26 and 28 and a half feet. And just that middle section will have an appearance of three stories and 36 feet. It's important to note that while we haven't had time, we'll have to come back in front of you in the future for architectural approval, from the rear side of this building. So if you're looking to the west, this building will all be two stories. So it'll have the appearance of a two-story building from the backside. Go to the next slide, Keaton? And I just want to emphasize, all those changes are really our effort to try and listen to the additional input received from the board during your meeting on May 4th and make some changes, uh, based on the topics that were discussed. If you actually look at the NMU Design Standards, it has two examples of residential buildings. The first one is figure 67, which is labeled as an appropriate residential building. And as a result of these changes, if you look at this and compare it to our north building, we're really getting close. This building, you can see on the edge, it's two stories, rises up to a three-story building, respects and enhances the public realm, diverse architecture, a lot of windows, well-defined entrances, sidewalk- well-defined entrances, sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera. So we really think we're mirroring the concept that is illustrated in this photo. And then if you can go to the next slide. So this is Figure 68, which is labeled as inappropriate residential building. And I think every single person on this call would unequivocally agree that this would be an inappropriate building. But it's just to emphasize, if you look at appropriate-style buildings and inappropriate-style buildings, I think it's clear as day, we've really done our homework in terms of hitting the criteria for an appropriate-sized building. Again, the NMU district allows 36 feet height, but based on the input we received, we've tried to make that building feel lower. And now only the middle segment of that building has a height of three stories. While that meeting only occurred two weeks ago, that took a lot of work on behalf of Matt Long and his team at the architectural firm. So we really did make an effort to listen to what you said. So the next slide. So obviously, the whole purpose of tonight's discussion, as was the previous meeting on May 4th, was the State Environmental Quater Review Act. I think Chip made mention to a couple of these bullet points relative to the intent, but I just want to emphasize a couple of things. Number one, obviously, it's a broad-based view, and I think everyone agrees with that. There's a whole assortment of topics that come into play. You're aware of those. You've spent a lot of time on those. But secondly, I want to emphasize that the language does say that one of the obligations of the lead agency is try to incorporate the consideration of environmental impact at the earliest possible time. You're doing your due diligence. We respect that. But we have been at this since last August. So we're hoping, they're in a position that you feel comfortable that you could proceed with a secret determination this evening. And then second of all, as you're well aware, environmental impacts are not the sole basis for decision-making. You have to ultimately consider social, economic, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not just simply looking at, hey, this project has environmental impact, therefore it is bad. It's a broad-based view. Environmental factors are not the sole basis for decision-making. And I know you all know that. So the next slide, Keaton. So in terms of how did we get to where we are today? We started with the submission of a completed short environmental assessment form. That was appropriate because this is an unlisted action. We'll talk about in a few minutes. The Board did choose, and I understand why, to conduct a coordinated environmental review. You solicited comments twice from a wide assortment of involved and interested agencies. Tim did a good job coordinating with all those agencies. Ultimately, none of those agencies expressed any objections to the Planning Board acting as the lead agency. And more importantly, none of them expressed any concerns about potentially significant adverse environmental impacts. We've done all our technical homework. We've submitted fully engineered plans, an engineer's report, a SWIP, and other reports and studies. As I mentioned previously, ultimately, your consulting engineer, William Associates, has confirmed that yes, he's comfortable in terms of Seeker and all those stringent technical requirements. The last point is really the most important one on this slide, and it just reiterates your substantive requirements. You have to identify the potential environmental impacts. I believe you've done that. You have to take a hard look at those impacts. We think at this juncture, you've done that as well. And then finally, you're required to issue a secret determination supported by a reasoned elaboration. I did have the opportunity to review the updated negative declaration the Village Attorney prepared. And I think if you look at that and compare it to any other negative declaration that's been issued by an agency in Western New York over the past five years, I think you'd be hard-pressed to find one that's more thorough and more comprehensive. It really is a comprehensive document and really does look at a broad-based, wide assortment of environmental impact. So we think you've clearly satisfied that obligation. So the next slide, Keaton. So there was discussion last, or two weeks ago, about the whole fact that the house located two parcels away may be eligible for listing on the National State Register. And yes, indeed, ultimately, on May 14th, and thank you for sharing that, determination was issued by SHIPO, not surprisingly. The stone house at 75 Evans is eligible. So where that comes into play in terms of procedural aspects of Seeker, is in certain instances, that could trigger the need for this to be treated as a Type 1 action as opposed to an unlisted action. So I'm going to go over how do you get there. Number one, Type 1 actions. There's a wide assortment of relevant criteria, as Chip mentioned during the pre-meeting. The relevant criteria here is spelled out in five, which is my second bullet point. Construction of new residential units that meet or exceed the following thresholds. In a city, town, or village having a population of 150,000 people or less, 200 units to be connected to public water and sewer. So what we're proposing here is we're going from 57 units today, the bloker home, to 95 units, which is an increase of 38. So keep that in mind. And then at criteria nine, this is the reduced threshold that can apply in certain instances relative to historic resources. And basically, what it says is that any unlisted action that exceeds 25% of any threshold established in this section, occurring wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any historic building, structure, facility, site or district, or prehistoric site that is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, or that is listed on the State Register of Historic Places, or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places. So criteria three has now been met. Letter was issued by SHIPO on May 14th that yes, indeed, the house, the stone house at 75 Evans, is eligible for listing. Nonetheless, it's not a Type 1 action because of the fact that we're not increasing the number of units on that site by more than 50. Instead, we're going from 57 units to 95 units. Of course, 38 is less than 50. So the Type 1 action does not come into play. That's regardless of whether or not you feel that house at 75 Evans is substantially contiguous. Meaning, in other words, if you view that it is substantially contiguous, it still does not trigger the need to treat this as a Type 1 action. So the next slide, Keaton. So there was also discussion two weeks ago about some of the language in the Seeker Handbook, the fourth edition. It's VC-published earlier this year. So I'm just going to talk quickly about a couple of the points. It's important to note that the handbook is not the Seeker law, the environmental conservation law. It's not the Seeker regulations. It's a guide, a manual, that is very detailed, to help all the stakeholders involved in the environmental review with specific topics, specific questions. So the next slide, Keaton. So I'm going to come back to that discussion about the SHIPO letter. We had discussion on May 4th about the original SHIPO letter issued way back on July 3rd of 2019. And I want to emphasize two points here. That at that time, SHIPO was looking at archaeological and cultural resources. So they did look at the site. As Kate pointed out two weeks ago, it was her opinion, there were houses in that immediate vicinity that were eligible, but just had not made the SHIPO database. She was correct. Obviously, that changed on May 14th. When I received that eligibility determination issued by SHIPO on May 14th, sent a quick email over to Jennifer Walkowski, who had issued that letter, asking for what her position was relative to this project and its proximity. While I did speak to her, she's working remotely, she did send a quick response. And I want to emphasize what it said. Said, "Thank you for contacting New York State Historic Preservation Office. As you know, our office reviewed the bloker home's construction project back in 2019, at which time we signed off on the project with the comments you attached." I attached the previous letter. "We're not issuing new comments on this project as the house in question is not immediately adjacent to proposed development area." And then, of course, she notes that we did receive the application. So from SHIPO's perspective, this is not a potentially significant adverse environmental impact. And of course, SHIPO's perspective on this, while not determinative, is certainly relevant. So the next slide. So then I just want to mention that whole concept of substantially contiguous. And I know Chip brought this up during the pre-meeting and emphasized the fact that ultimately, it's a subjective determination. But there are some examples that are spelled out on page 21 of the Seeker Handbook. Some of the examples are construction of a structure that's in immediate vicinity of a national building listed on the National Register of Historic Places. However, if there was an intervening six-lane highway, it would not be. Construction of a structure separated by a city park or 50-foot right-of-way, that would be substantially contiguous. So item number one would not be. Number two would be. Residential development overlooking historically designated bay. We're not dealing with historic districts. And then four also deals with something, or district, or a Native American site on the National Register of Historic Places. So I think that's subjective, whether we're substantially contiguous. But to bring it back to a couple of slides previously, ultimately, that is not going to trigger the need to treat this as a Type 1 action because we do not meet that threshold of 50 additional residential units. So I think that particular topic has been put to bed. So the next slide. So a couple of things in terms of actually looking at the handbook. And this is where I think the Planning Board has actually done a very good job. So one of the things that really Seeker encourages you to do is to consider input that would result in project changes. That's exactly what we've done. So if you look back at what we presented on August 6th of last year, and compare it to our most recent changes that we presented this evening, we think we really reduced the environmental impact as a result of that process. In this case, Merson versus McNally, the well-known Court of Appeals case, and basically, the court said, certainly, changes developed as part of an open review process and incorporated by the applicant into the ultimate design, submitted for approval, could be considered by the lead agency in reaching a negative declaration. So how has the project evolved over time? We think in terms of environmental impact, consistency with community character, et cetera, et cetera. It's all evolved for the good in terms of potential environmental impacts. Keaton, if you go to the next slide. The first bullet point, may a lead agency rely on the expertise of an involved or interested agency in making its negative declaration? But this becomes more important in light of the letter that was issued or the email that was issued by SHIPO today. And of course, it says, yeah, there are specific agencies of expertise with respect to specific topics. The New York State Department of Transportation for traffic, SHIPO for cultural and historic resources, engineering departments for technical issues, et cetera, et cetera. So it's certainly appropriate for you to consider the expertise and opinion of those involved in interested agencies. And again, none of them throughout this whole process have expressed a concern about any potentially significant adverse environmental impacts. So the next slide, Keaton. So the final point I want to make is, as a result of those changes that we've discussed, that we're offering up this evening, increasing the side yard setback of the south building from 40 feet to 50 feet, and then increasing the front yard setback of the north building from 20 feet to 25 feet, while we think that in direct response to the input received, it puts us in a strange situation in that those two changes actually take us out of compliance with the underlying NMU design standards. Fortunately, Section 11223A to the Village Code, you do have the ability with respect to certain topics to consider the issuance of waivers. If you go to the next slide, Keaton. This is the actual language pulled directly from that section of the code. So if you find that it's appropriate because of impractical considerations and possibility to waive or modify those requirements with respect to setbacks, you can do that. It is subject to a couple of limitations. You can't grant a waiver or a deviation that would result in a deviation of more than 50%. We're not doing that. And then secondly, you can't do that for certain topics. Building height, number of stories, number of parking spaces, location of parking, et cetera, et cetera. So you clearly do not have authority to grant the request for a waiver for the number of parking spaces. So in light of the fact that those two changes that actually bring us out of compliance are in direct response to the input we received, and trying to hit that criteria in terms of the gradual transition, the compatibility with nearby land uses, et cetera, et cetera, we would ask you to consider granting those two requested waivers. In summary, what we're asking you to do this evening is issue a negative declaration pursuant to the State Environmental Quater Review Act. We think that's both appropriate and justified. And then granting of those two requested waivers. And then, of course, we would welcome the opportunity to answer any questions you may have. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to present the updated plans and an overview of where we were and where we are now. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions for Sean?
Good job, Sean. Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions? Are there any questions on the site plan?
Yes, the driveways onto Evans, I am still concerned about how this will impact the houses on Evans Street. Would the applicant like to address that? As far as the lights from vehicles entering and exiting, or mostly exiting the property?
Keaton, do you want to go back to slide, one of those slides that has the updated plan?
Sure. Do you need me to share it?
Let me give you a slide number. It's like slide, slide 22 through, any of them. Slide 22 through 24, any one of those slides. So obviously, if you look at the southern driveway, coming out where it's somewhat between two homes, but certainly the northern portion of that driveway would be opposite a home on the opposite side. And then the driveway on the north side, I guess a small portion of it might be, the southern portion of that driveway is opposite an existing home. But we would welcome some input on that. I don't think it arises to a potentially significant adverse environmental impact. But if those particular property owners want to engage in discussions, I guess one thing that wouldn't be off the table, we needed to make some minor landscaping improvements on their side of the street to try and minimize that impact. That's certainly a topic that we could discuss and report back to you prior to you making a decision on the pending request for site plan approval.
Well, this has been a concern of the public. As you pointed out, we've had many meetings about this project since the midpoint. So I'm surprised it hasn't been addressed to this point.
Yeah, I mean, driveways, obviously, again, given that it's a village, this is to minimize it at all. There are driveways that come out in close proximity to homes. Again, if there's something we can do, provide some effective screening on their side of the street. Obviously, can't do much where the driveway comes into the street. It's certainly something we would be willing to entertain.
Well, it's funny, there was a driveway that wouldn't impact anyone. That was eliminated from the site plan. I'm going to comment about the negative declaration, and something that I haven't been in support of from the very beginning, well, from almost the very beginning, but I corrected myself from the first meeting. And that was in the negative deck on page 19, where it talks to the Planning Board and Traffic and Safety Committee, their preference for having a driveway out onto Village Point Lane, and how, we're supposed to say that the absence of the driveway connection to Village Point Lane will result in a significant adverse impact as compared to existing conditions. I mean, I'm not in favor. I've never, I haven't been in favor of that for a very, very, very long time. I still feel that it's a safety hazard going onto Evans, making the left. And just because Amherst Highway Superintendent said no, that doesn't mean that's not what the village wants. So it might be, you know, he versus she in this. But I'm not sure that that's a resolution that I'm willing to say, well, oh, we tried, and that's not what's going to happen. to happen. This is the village, this is what the village has asked for, and that's just where I am at this point with that.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my only response would be that, you know, we've gone back and forth on that. As you recall, we originally had a driveway connection to Village Point Lane that was not viewed well by the residents of Village Point Lane themselves. We said ultimately, we would do it either way. Originally, the planning board kind of expressed a consensus, they wanted it. Then we came back, the Village Planning Board expressed a clear concurrence that they didn't want it. And I believe there was actually kind of an unofficial vote taken at a meeting several months ago where we were told to remove it. In terms of the position of the town-
Wait, I got to that, Wes, as chairman, could you, I, I missed a couple of meetings, but I don't remember reading them in minutes. Could someone refresh my memory here?
Yeah, I believe, Kate, you actually were at that meeting. I, I could try and pull up the minutes.
Where we took a vote on whether to remove that exit?
Yeah.
I don't recall that either.
Well, we can, we can look back at the minutes. It was clearly discussed again because there was a change in opinion. But I would note in terms of the Highway Superintendent's position, unfortunately for everyone involved, he has jurisdiction, exclusive jurisdiction over Village Point Lane. He's made it clear now on a couple of occasions, he will not be allowing a driveway connection to Village Point Lane. So ultimately, that is the controlling determination. We're stuck with it.
Well, I'm hoping this board takes controlling, you know, attitude of Evans Street since that is our, and I'm still concerned about the residential impact on Evans Street from these driveways. Um, that's what I have to say about the driveways.
I mean, I would agree, we need to minimize it. If you look at the south driveway, by moving it further into the bloke or property where it used to be 10-foot and now it's 20-foot, you're almost putting it in front of a house. When it was shifted-
It was in front of the house.
On the property line, it was between two houses. So maybe that could be readjusted again.
No, 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 no. The way I'm reading this, and we can get off the measured drawings, is it was, it was directly in the, in the middle of a house before, and now it's semi affecting two houses because it's trying to be sort of in the middle of houses. Before, it highly impacted that other house.
But we got to remember how much traffic is coming in and out and when that's happening.
Yeah, we're talking 35 cars at rush hour. I mean, that's a lot of cars.
But rush hour is also during the day when, you know, headlights won't be on. So I agree with Ron to a certain extent.
What, what time of year?
But if, well, that's true too. But if there's leeway at that south end to move that driveway 10 feet, that, you know, that's a site plan issue that it could be adjusted to make sure that it impacts those two houses in the least possible way. They don't have to move.
I think it'd be good to-
Yeah, I guess my, my only, my only com- this is Sean, my only comment on that is it's a topic certainly to be discussed, but I guess I would remind everyone, I don't think anyone's going to take the position that the driveway locations and the potential for headlights coming out during those certain times of year when the peak travel period for the PM weekday could be after it's dark. I don't think anyone's suggesting that's a potentially significant adverse environmental impact. I think that would be a real stretch. I, I'm not aware of any determination. Yeah, I don't think-
Any plan issue, I'm not willing to jump on the bandwagon of the negative declaration saying that basically it's not going to, um, I'm not going to allow it to make a path for us by saying that that Village Point Lane access isn't crucial to this project. And maybe the applicant should work on the town of Amherst a little bit more to see, see their, their, their need for it to, in order to make a good site plan.
I, I, I just want to make clear, I've done that. And I've been told on, again and again, unequivocally, no, it is not happening. That's, I, I think you've, I think everyone has seen the communication that's not leaving any, any debate. I've talked to the Highway Superintendent himself, said there will not be a driveway connection to Village Point Lane.
Well, I don't know how that trumps this, this board's opinion.
Because it's his jurisdiction. There's no, there's, unless the pla- unless the village wants to sue him, which I think the statute of limitations may be now expired, but that's, you know, that's the only way around that. I mean, it's his jurisdiction, it's his, it's his road. I, I'm not, and I'm not arguing, Kate, on you, it just, that's just a fact, it's his We're stuck with that. Again, we were fine with it either way. The residents made it clear on Village Point Lane, they didn't want it. So we said, hey, ultimately, if everyone agrees, we'd remove it. But ultimately, the town's Highway Superintendent responded to input from the neighbors and said, I'm not allowing it. The question was asked again, he reiterated his previous determination, I'm still not allowing it. That's not something that the town board, the town planning department-
We are supposed to listen to our neighbors, our, our neighbors on Evans, and they're saying they don't want the entire project. So-
I know.
Yeah, I mean, that's-
I'm just saying on that particular topic, and I would remind everyone, and again, it doesn't mean you can't consider it. Evans Street itself is not a village street, it's a Erie County Highway. Erie County Department of Public Works has said they're fine. They're not looking at driveway locations opposite homes, I readily acknowledge that. In terms of traffic management and the number of trips, they're comfortable.
Well, they, they also have many other four-lane, five-lane, six-lane, eight-lane highways that they, they look at. And no traffic study will ever be on the favorable side of a small community like Williamsville that has major roads running through it that have been widened more time. This is one of our remaining roads that hasn't been widened, there's no room to widen it. So it just suffers the impact of, of overuse.
Again, I can only talk about the traffic impacts of our particular project.
I, and I remember it being determined that it wasn't going to substantially increase.
No, so again, keep in mind that you, you, the board, thought it was appropriate not to rely on the expertise of our traffic engineering firm, SRF Associates, but to retain at our expense Fisher Associates, who's also a reputable traffic engineering firm, also out of Rochester. They looked at the original traffic study, they had some comments, they had some concerns. We did an updated analysis, they issued a comment letter, I believe it was in January, saying based on the updated analysis, we concur. The difference, I believe, in terms of level of service or delay with the elimination of the connection to Village Point Lane is five seconds during the peak travel period. Again, not, nothing, but not substantial.
And how many less accidents?
They don't have, they, they don't form an opinion on the magnitude of reduction of accidents associated with that.
Sean, as Chairman of Traffic and Safety, I remind you that irrespective of what Fisher said, the, uh, the recommendation by Traffic and Safety was, uh, that the exit and entrance to Village Point be allowed. And it was recommended to, uh, Planning Board itself.
No, and you're, and you're, you're, you're absolutely correct, Wallace, you're absolutely correct.
In any project-
I want to make it clear, we didn't ignore that topic. I mean, I, I've spoken to the Highway Superintendent directly, it's, it's his road.
Look, my opinion is it would be better project if we could have that access. We can't get it. It's not something that should, uh, in my mind negatively affect the project. It, it would be great if it could be there, but you can't get everything you want on any design project, on any construction project. So you have to make decisions along the way. And in my opinion, it doesn't, it would be great to have it, we're not getting it. I don't see this as being a, a huge issue, um, the way they're laying it out. Could we nudge the driveways a little bit more, perhaps? But I'm in favor of this, uh, of the waiver for this, um, in moving that driveway over. And, uh, and I think, uh, I think it makes it a better project.
I would agree. Can, can we go back to Seeker to those first two, first two statements that we needed to address? I mean, I think Sean did a very good job of addressing-
The impacts, the, the impacts that were identified as, as moderate by majority of the board.
Right, and I think Sean did, did a very good job of addressing the first one especially to say, you know, that gradual impact is subjective, everything about the project is within code. Now it's actually a little bit below, I'll call it below code, um, as far as like height and size and setback and landscape meets code, lighting meets code, um, you know, and in my opinion, it is a pretty gradual, a gradual change. I mean, almost two-thirds of the units that are going to be on this site are already on the site.
I agree with that. It's already a high, a high-density housing. What are we doing here?
It shouldn't be. I mean, let's look at the NMU standards. The, the reason these standards were created was because they were supposed to be neighborhood mixed use. Villages dropped the ball on this. The only reason these, this whole NMU district was even created was to put our tax dollars into the village to help financially and fiscally make it sustainable in the future as we have a tax cap that we cannot, we're not supposed to exceed, all of the villages exceeding by 12% this past year before COVID happened. So if you are, I mean, if you're creating these kinds of developments that have no tax base to a community, why are you doing it? That's not the reason the NMU standards were created.
So how would you like them to develop it to make it a more gradual change if that's the issue?
I didn't hear that.
That's not, yeah. The point was kind of change to a taxable project or a non-taxable project.
Chip has none in our purview, you know, it's right in the Seeker handbook. Well, it's not, I mean, that's right in the very be- the very, I mean, Sean did a great job putting together what he wanted that, um, us to see from the NMU standards. He did a very, very good job. But let's back off to where, um, it, it states what, what it is. I'll go to it on my screen because I've had it open this whole time. You know, it was amended in 2015, recognizing the community's desire to maintain its historic character, provide for enhanced walkability and support economic and neighborhood environment. But the whole point of, of the, if you search this design standard, the whole point of it was supposed to be neighborhood mixed use. It was to sensitively integrate use and-
How is this not mixed use in this neighborhood?
And, and I, I would also, you need to be careful about confusing economic vibrancy and taxable status of the property. Those are not necessarily the same thing. Um, and we really, as I've indicated before, we really can't discriminate against a user because they're tax exempt if they're, if what they're proposing is a, is a permitted use, which it is here.
Bringing people into creating-
I'm sorry.
-in the village, right? It's people who are shopping in our shops, eating in our restaurants. It, it does create an economic impact. Mixed use is mixed use.
How is this not mixed use?
Well, and this is mixed use, this is exactly what the standard asks for, this is within code.
How is this mixed use? Two different types of residential, so we're going to call it mixed use, that's what it is. It's not an R3M district, it's an NMU district.
Because it allows a mix of uses, but it does not mandate, there's nothing in the NMU standards that mandate a mix of uses on a single parcel. What it does is authorizes a mix of uses in the district, unlike, say, the R1 or R2 districts which only allow one use, which is single-family residential. That's, that is this, in the sense in which this is a mixed-use district. There's nothing in the code that mandates every single parcel in the district has to be a mixed use. There's not a single parcel in the NMU district that would satisfy that criteria.
So it's mixed use.
What I was saying, the district is mixed use and this is an allowable use within that district.
Agreed.
But no, that I would not, this is not a, a mixed-use project in the sense that it contains a mix of different types of uses, but that's not what's mandated, uh, it's allowed, but it's not mandated.
So Tip, how do we address for number one on Seeker, what we've been talking about?
Well, I, I mean, I, I gave you, I gave the board what I, you know, my recommendation on that, which was that this, this site plan and these elevations were, whether, again, and you can tweak these things for sure during, um, you know, architectural review or site plan review, but for purposes of Seeker, whether or not the, this proposal significantly conflicts with the zoning code. And given the tension between the need for gradual transition and those design standards that, that Sean referred to, um, in his presentation, that, that it's striking a balance to the best they can. I mean, I, it's difficult to put somebody in a position where they cannot comply with the code. And so that was, that was the way I addressed it in the, in the draft that was circulated is, was exactly that, that it, that on balance and overall, it, uh, it was not significantly conflicting with the zoning code. And I, you know, I think that's a, a fair interpretation of this, uh, proposal as compared to what the code provides. So that's what's in there. I mean, in terms of how do you resolve it, I, it's, I mean, I gave the board a recommendation, you, you either agree with it or you don't agree with it, and it's fine either, well, it is what it is either way. But that's how, you know, that's how I addressed it. You know, the, is, is noted in there, there, these design standards impose minimum height stories, maximum setbacks, uh, but also require gradual transitions. Those things frankly are a little bit hard to reconcile, um, with each other and, but at some point, there has to be a balance of those two things if there's in competition. The question for you all is whether you think the applicant's done that in this case in such a, in such a way that you're satisfied that there is no, again, with this criteria, that there is not a large material conflict with the zoning code that somehow could be resolved, uh, through an environmental impact study process. And similar, similarly, um, you know, it addresses the change in intensity of use. And there's clearly an increase in intensity of use here. The question is how significant it is, given the, the nature of what's surrounding it. And then, of course, the other issue that arose subsequent to the last meeting is the, is the historical impact. So that's, and those are all addressed, um, in what I thought, based on the record, was , uh, the most appropriate way to deal with them. You know, hope everyone had an opportunity to read that, digest that, and, um, you know, I think the, the, the choices at this point are either to adopt it or adopt something else, or determine that, that there's still additional information that's needed. But again, I, I don't, I don't know what that would be at this point, we'd have to identify what that is. But this is a very exhaustive, extensive record for, certainly for the, for the size of project that it is.
So Wes couldn't, I mean, given, obviously, we have an opportunity that anyone could- So Wes couldn't, I mean, given, obviously, we have an opportunity that anyone could ask Chip any questions about the draft. If, if there are no questions and we've all read it, can we move forward and take a vote on this?
I, I believe you can if you'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
What draft though, Amy? What draft am I looking at that I'm voting?
The most recent, the one Chip sent us with the red line changes today.
It would have been the one at four o'clock or so this afternoon. Is there about something like that?
Yeah.
Does everyone have that?
Sorry, sorry, Keaton. Can you pull up the, the clean version of that, the most recent version? Not that I doubt we're going to page through thirty-one pages, but at least so we just, so it's clear on the record what it is that Amy's making a motion.
I think I got it here. Hold on one second. Is this the clean version?
That looks like the one with the changes.
Oh, yeah, it is in red. Hold on.
There's a second attachment.
Okay, we got it now. Is there a specific page?
Chip, does the date on the, May eighteenth make that the latest date?
Pardon me?
Yeah, May. Twenty twenty is the latest one. That's today's, the afternoon one from today.
Yeah, I sent the version today at.
Kind of mid-later afternoon.
Yeah, it was.
Four o'clock?
Four oh eight.
Yep, this is the one that's on the screen.
Okay, so Deb, it's Amy. I will make a motion for log twenty nineteen dash PB dash six A and six B local homes located at one thirty-five Evans Street for seeker determination that we approve the seeker determination of significance slash negative declaration that was put forth on May eighteenth, twenty twenty.
Is there a second motion?
I'll second it.
Is there a discussion on the motion?
Someone in favor in the section about the village finding that there's no adverse impact compared to existing use with the elimination of the driveway Village Point Lane.
Are we not going to go down the list of the eleven items again?
Why, why would we do that? You, you voted on that last time.
Okay, I thought maybe with information, people would either change or.
Well, the only information I think that is new would be this, this revised proposal, which was meant to address those first two criteria, the historic issue, which is number eight. And I suppose, yeah, well, the hard cropping issue, I guess as well, which would be eight as well. I don't know. That's up, well, there's a motion, there's a motion on, the motion's been made and seconded. So.
So Kate, where would you like to word it in there about the Village Point Lane? Where would that fit into this?
Oh, I would like it to be stricken where it's said, it cannot conclude that the absence of a driveway connection to the Village Point Lane would result in adverse impact as compared to the existing conditions.
No, I, I just need to remind the board that there's been no new traffic information here. And when you voted on this last time, there was a no to small impact with respect to traffic on this. I understand the issue.
That was a consensus. It's not, that wasn't.
Right. No, I, I, I understand that. So that's why I'm just reminding the board though, that a majority of the board did vote that way. So.
I'm just saying what my opinion.
Yep. And you're absolutely right to do that. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with you. I just want to make sure that, again, the, the, the board is aware that, notwithstanding any objections anybody may have, that on that issue, there was a vote, and that was identified as a no to small.
Are there any other comments or questions on the motion? If not, is the board ready to vote? Deb, could you please take a roll call vote?
Mr. Trigilio?
Yes.
Mr. Pacer?
No.
Mr. Luster? I'm sorry?
No.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Rizone?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Kopa?
No.
Four to three?
Okay. In, in, in light of that, so we now have an adopted NECDAC. I will finalize it by taking off the draft stamp. And we can have that. That would mean that the next step in this project is, well, right, Sean, you guys are, need to go to the ZBA for your parking, requested parking variance.
Right.
And then depending on what happens there, you'll have to come back here for, for architectural review approval and, and site plan approval, right? Yeah. Well, yeah, there's a no approval. Yeah, so both of those.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the only question I have is, is the, what is the board's feeling about the two waivers? And second of all, I want to note with respect to, and I know Tim will chime in, the parking variance we need from the ZBA now that we've made some changes to the plans, I will have to amend that application. So we will do that.
Yeah. And so before, and I just want to be, we're, we're not being, you're not being asked to vote on those waivers right now because that's part of, that's issued as part of architectural review or site plan approval. But I think,
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I think what you're looking for is, is feedback on that.
Yeah, I guess feedback, or remember, there's two alternatives here. The planning board can ultimately make the decision on waivers, or we could go to the zoning board of appeals. So I guess direction, right?
Yeah, no. Whoops, I'm sorry. That's a good point. Even where there's a waiver, you could alternatively seek a variance. That, that, that's, that's a, that's a fair point. So, so.
I'm not sure if the board has a preference. I'm just asking what the preference might be if they have one.
I would prefer we stick with the waivers, especially in consideration of that one driveway to the south, that if we need to adjust that a little bit in order to lessen the impact on houses across the street, that we have some flexibility there.
That's a good point. Good point.
This is Wes. I agree with Amy.
You got to keep your face away from his face, baby.
Sorry.
I'm Sean.
Yeah.
One other thing, with these two driveways come onto Evans, possibly they could do a little more research, what is across the street, if there's any landscape.
Yeah.
On the driveway.
Yeah, what, what, yeah, what, what, what we'll do based on the, yeah, what we'll do is based on the discussion that was held tonight, we'll get a more precise plan showing where that is. And I, I do agree with Amy. That's a good point that by not getting the variances or seeking the variances, that leaves some discretion to discuss that further. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I would also agree with that because the ZBA would probably grant you a more specific variance, at least so you'd have more flexibility.
Yeah, no, I, I agree that the waiver process definitely is just because of the nature of it, has a little bit more flexibility built into it and, and variances too generally.
Yeah. So what I would, so what I would do, Tim, is then I would amend the ZBA application, you know, just based on the minor changes in the layout. And then, of course, the number of parking spaces went up one and the number of units went down two.
Perfect. Yep. Once I get that, I'll give it to ZBA. I haven't talked to them yet about what the schedule will be exactly.
Right.
So I will let you know once we figure that out.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions for Sean or anyone tonight? Anything else we need to talk about tonight? Do we need to tables, site plan, architectural review for this or just because we?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, there's no harm in doing that. I, I think the agenda was clear that it was only on this special meeting agenda for secret determination anyway. Well, I don't think it's necessary. I, I would do just want to say to the board, I appreciate the difficulty with respect to this project. There's been a lot of information that's been thrown at you. And I appreciate that it's not been easy for anybody. But, but I, I commend you on, on really taking your, your jobs here very seriously in doing this.
Thank you. Appreciate your help. Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You're a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Good night. Stay safe.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thanks.
Good night, everyone.